Item three is administration of board of office newly elected members. Item five is through the word of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is administration of board of office newly elected members. Our clerk Kevin will lead the board of office to John, Nancy, and myself.
Very official. Okay, do you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I am Jonathan Kegel.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of.
Whittnall School District Board of Education.
Whittnall School District Board of Education.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, item four is the organization of the board of the election of officers will be chaired by senior board member Nancy DeRash.
Nancy.
Will be elected.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, so this is a part of the meeting in front of the year I always like. So we want to do the election of officers, so we'll start with board president. Are there any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Kegel.
Second.
Jonathan, do you accept that?
Do you?
Are there any other nominations for president? And one more time, any other nominations for president? All right, done. All in favor of Jonathan Kegel for president, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Congratulations Jonathan.
Thank you very much.
And then we have vice president. Nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Quinn.
Quinn, do you accept?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kevin. Any other nominations for vice president? Other nominations for vice presidents? All right, then all in favor of Quinn Brunet for vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous. All right, then we will do treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Richter.
Stephanie, do you accept?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that your role tonight?
Yeah. Did you get to appoint me that later?
Any other nominations for treasurer? Other nominations for treasurer? All right, then all in favor of Stephanie Richter for treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope, unanimous. And last but not least, board clerk.
I'd like to nominate Kevin.
Kevin, do you accept?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations for board clerk? And one more time, nominations for board clerk. All right, then all in favor of Kevin Stokoyak for board clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous as well. So we have president Jonathan Kegel, vice president Quinn Brunet, treasurer Stephanie Richter, and board clerk Kevin Stokoyak.
Thank you Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for serving and renewing the office for following you. Item five is appointments. So this is going to be for 2017-2018 year. So we're going to go down through the list. Item five A is Greenfield Park and Rec Liaison. Nancy, would you like to remain the representative?
I would unless someone else would like to do it.
Okay, so then Nancy will continue as the representative, thank you. Item five B is a Hills Corners Park and Rec Creation Liaison. Would anyone like to become their representative? If not, I can remain if I just wanted to make it open if someone would like to take that responsibility. Okay, then I will remain Park and Rec Liaison. Five C is the WASB delegate and alternate delegate. Kevin, would you like to remain the delegate?
Sure.
And Nancy, would you like to remain the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin and Nancy will remain in their roles. Five D CISA One Delegate, Kevin, would you like to remain the representative?
Unless someone else would like to. Anybody? All right, sounds good.
Okay. Item five E is the SWSA Representative. Quinn, would you like to become the representative since you've already attended the meeting so far?
I will, I can do my best. I do have a scheduling allows me to do that. Not all the time, but when it fits I, I do enjoy it. I get to see Mike more.
Okay. Excellent.
Thanks Quinn.
Now, item five F is school liaisons for Hills Corners Elementary that I was assigned for last year. Would anyone like to become liaison for Hills Corners Elementary? If not, I will retain that. Anyone?
Go ahead.
No, thank you.
Then I will remain liaison. Edgerton, Quinn, would you like to remain the liaison?
I would love to.
Okay, Quinn will remain that. Whittnall Middle School, right now we have Stephanie and John doing it jointly. Would you like to maintain jointly or would either of you prefer to not?
Either way.
I can continue that or if I could, either that or the high school, I'd like to be represented as one of them. Okay. So which makes more sense? I guess we'll let you decide.
Hey, it's fine because I would be happy with the high school too. But that's the one school that I haven't been a liaison for yet.
Yeah, okay.
Is the high school, so.
Okay.
But you know Kevin's the liaison and I don't want to step on his toes either, so.
If we slowly potentially have you at the high school.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So then.
That works.
Sounds good to me.
John, you will be the middle school liaison. Okay, so that's John Jones. And then for the high school, Kevin and Stephanie.
Okay.
Okay. Onto item five G is committee, so for the finance committee, Stephanie will remain the chair and the members will remain unchanged. Personnel, Kevin will remain the chair and the members will remain unchanged. Policy, Quinn will remain the chair, members again remaining unchanged. Legislative committee, we're going to review this as we go along to see what the purpose and vision for that committee is, so we're not going to set people for that yet from the conversation. Here we go, so as of now, that's all set. So on item six, comments from the audience regarding agenda items. As a reminder, comments can only be made about items listed on the agenda for this meeting. This is the only time audience members make comment on current agenda items during this business meeting. For addressing the boards, please state the agenda item number that you are speaking about, your name and your address. You may speak once for max of five minutes. And if multiple people plan on making the same comment, we ask that you select one person to speak on behalf of you. Do you have any comments?
Can we back up a second? I think we have to vote on the Park and Rec, the Greenfield Park and Rec position. I think that's an official vote.
I think so.
We have, and we have voted on it in the past, but I did look into like Greenfield School District for me and there, so I didn't just.
Okay. I knew we had in the past, okay.
Okay, so do we have any comments from the audience? This is only for current agenda items?
Yes.
For proposed for next?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so seeing none. Item seven, gifts, donations, and recognition. We have none for this meeting. So item eight is a consent agenda. Consent agenda items are all approved at once in our one meeting approval items. Eight A is approval of April vouchers and vouchers payable. Eight B is approval of March 27th and April 10, 2017 school board meeting minutes. Eight C is approval of personnel recommendations. Eight D is approval of 2017-2018 Charter 220 agreement. Would anyone like to remove an item? C and D. Okay, so John has requested that we remove C and D, anyone else? Okay, so then I'll take a motion to approve items eight A and eight B.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries for items eight A and eight B. Eight C, John, go ahead.
Unless I'm mistaken, we haven't seen this before, have we?
Which, I'm sorry?
On the C. Unless I'm mistaken, we haven't seen this before, have we?
Well, it's, I guess everyone has counted, we have.
Okay, so it's starting on page 11 of the packet. Correct. Okay, and his proposal is spending an extra thirty-six thousand, not an extra necessarily, but thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, and it affects one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, what, ten positions? I just thought that we might have come across this sometime before rather than just trying to, some discussions, trying to understand how things are changing. I'm just not familiar with seeing something like this and going.
Sure.
So I'm not exactly sure what's happening with this one.
So typically this would have been under the personnel recommendations form, and because of that and because this district has not published individual people's salaries before, this was the way to try to give a holistic approach. The form, if you go back up to page, the one with the resignation, the one right before at page 10. We started putting all these positions in that form and it did not provide enough information on that form to give a holistic approach to how some of the changes were. They would have been listed individually on that form. And so the below that we decided to put it in that type of proposal so you could see some of the collective pieces of how coordinators are put together there or some of the delegations of duty. So it was an approach as compared to putting it on the form before that.
Okay, so I just, I guess I don't really understand what's going on. Who is, who's taking on more roles? Or is anybody losing roles? The, how salaries being divided up here? I mean, the whole thing is, I don't understand.
We're not, so are we actually voting on individual roles? We're just voting on the wage increase. So this isn't, we're not voting on the individual roles, so that could be done outside. Voting on now is a wage increase.
Okay, so unless I know, so these wage increases are, that look to be beyond what others have gotten in the district, so. I mean, if their roles are changing and it warrants more wage, then it seems to me that there is more information to be gathered or at least delivered than.
There was a follow-up email that Lisa sent out.
There was the details of each of those?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that was in there? Was that, that was not?
What email was that?
It said additional salary detail?
In your packet, right?
It's in the packet. It had all of the details and a breakdown in a spreadsheet and increases.
I did not see that either. Where was it?
Was an explanation.
It's in one of them.
So I had sent an email with a link to it, but it's also in your folder.
It's in a folder, there's board packet, lease agreement, the how to release the taxes, resignation, and vouchers complete report, that's what I see.
I just saw it in the email, I didn't see it as a link or it's not in the packet.
I remember seeing it. Because it explained that people were taking on extra duties.
Right, so it was hard to figure out. I agree with John, I was confused myself about this.
I had it, it may be in the wrong folder.
Do you want, it's, it is in one of the emails? Are you looking for more specifics? Because I know.
I don't know which email, so I don't see what you guys have here.
It was in your email?
Give me one second, I will see if I can find it.
I believe it was Friday.
I sent it out Friday about an hour after Kathy sent out the link. It was an email after Kathy sent out the packet email, there was a follow-up that had updated org chart, updated.
It is.
Friends' benefits.
Friends' benefits and the salary details for this proposal. There was three links.
I did not see that, right?
It is.
Friday at three forty-nine P.M.
Yep.
There are multiple links to it.
Additional documents, is that what the subject is?
It is, yes.
Okay, that helps me because it's not doing it in the meeting case, so.
So at this point, the, again, the motion is to approve the wages and the personal recommendation, which is the resignation. So do you have questions relating to the increase?
Yes, I still do, yes.
To the increase, okay.
Yes. So the question is, so you say this is budgeted for and you say it's dividing up some duties that were held by one person before, right? Some of this, some of this is a result of dividing up some duties and it's budgeted for. Does that mean that that position is going away for next year?
Yes.
Okay, is that usually something that, that we are included in, is elimination of district positions? Because it seems like it's in the budget in the sense that we're dividing up the salary to, among other people, but it's not anywhere else to approve, like eliminating a position. And I don't know, do we not approve position eliminations or we approve elimination, we approve position creations? Do we not approve position eliminations?
We haven't traditionally in and of themselves. They've been part of a staffing recommendation that's brought about this time of year that looks at the staff as a whole. So in years past, someone might have been a full-time instructor and they went down to a part-time. Or someone, you know, just because of class requirements, there was a section that was no longer needed. So sometimes it's been as part of a larger staffing.
Do we need to approve it if it's going to require additional funding?
Yeah, I just, I guess I just don't like the sense of it's all tied in with elimination of a position, there wasn't really any discussion of it, and I pretty much have been at work since Friday night, so I didn't see this email Friday afternoon, sorry. I'm just, I'm just, it just seems strange to me.
Well, I would agree with John on this. It came late in the day, we're getting board packets kind of late. If we could get that sooner, it would give us a little bit more time sometimes to dig into these things and to put an email out on Friday versus Monday. I too was confused. I don't remember us having a discussion about elimination of a technology position. I just think that could have been communicated more clearly even if it was in an email. I understand though, certainly support your recommendations here, I just thought it was a little bit confusing in how it came down.
So it came out on Friday afternoon at three forty-nine?
Right, that's kind of late. And I was busy too all weekend, I had no time. But you know, if we can back them up a little and get them back on Thursdays, it just gives us that extra day to dig in a little bit. But even at that, even at that, the point is, I missed it too and I was confused when I opened the board packet and this was not in the board, the folder, not today.
But yeah, one time it was.
It was, and I don't know where it went because my link was linked, yeah, that's why I'm very confused. Because when I made the link, it was in there, I don't know where it disappeared to.
It disappeared.
I'll tell you, one time I was told it was in the packet and it was, it was put in the packet at like six nineteen. I think the house before that did look.
And no, this was put, the time I made the link, it was in there, Quinn's right, that's what, yeah.
It just got missed and I think he's right, the discussion about eliminating that position was never had at the board level, about eliminating the technology director's position. Not that I can recall.
No, it was.
Do you want to take it or you want me to? I don't care.
It wasn't in the plan, right?
So. It seems.
But I think we have to give administration some latitude. We had a person retire, resign.
I get that.
Right? And this is how they feel is the best way. Now.
I can support that.
We have, in the past, I remember with the last administration, when we decided to hire a communications director, the past superintendent said, oh, well, we never eliminated a position, it was always there, we just never eliminated it. So they didn't feel they had to come to us to reenact it. So. Do I think they have to come to us to tell us that they're limited? We all knew this person resigned.
Didn't know they weren't continuing.
Right. We weren't, didn't know that.
It's spelled out in the email, that is.
I did not see it.
Let me boil it down to my, the big issue I have, I guess, is kind of the nuts and bolts of it is restructuring and the district, evidently district staff, jobs responsibilities, whatever going on, and it mostly is being covered in a consent agenda under wage increases. To me, that's just too many layers of not upfront or not obvious.
Okay. We don't have to approve those decisions. This is more of an FYI to us. We have to improve the wage increase. So to say it's not upfront and clear, we don't have to approve of that? It says in FYI to say this is what's happening, this is what's going on. So I want to make sure we're clear, especially since it's being recorded, that nothing's being hidden. We don't need to approve this. Individual board members are asking to have that opportunity, but collectively as a board, we haven't decided that that needs to be approved ahead of time.
So what's, finish up?
We have hired an administrator to do that job. It is not our job to pick individual staff within the district, correct? So it's not our job to.
I think it is our job that we have to end up approving these things.
The increase because we're.
Increase and hires and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, we have to.
We're not hiring anybody new.
No, we're not, but you said it's not our job to approve, you know, the positions in the district, we do approve the hires.
Choose the individuals that are doing it.
We do approve the hires, right?
May I for a second, if you don't mind? So, nobody, since, the way he's framing it is pretty much we're not hiring anybody new and nobody's having a new title.
I understand that.
And that's the big difference, I think, in here. That's where it comes down to the wage increases. The big question I would just have, because I know we didn't get into specifics in the email, it's just, which obviously the answer is yes, but we're going to be okay just the same way as we were if Eric were still here. And then if, it's my understanding we're saving X amount of dollars technically, well not saving, but recouping that money by spreading out the job responsibilities, correct?
So just to clarify, by law, the board has to approve administrator contracts and by board policy, and the board has to approve teacher contracts or renewal of that. Support staff and other positions in between, the board has not in the past, that manager positions have not come in front of this board. And so you're getting like all of those positions right now. The only thing the board has not, and you will collectively see through the budget process, is support staff. So just letting you know the past, positions that fall under the supervisor category have not come in front of the board because state statute and board policy says administrator contracts have to be approved by the board and teacher contracts have to. So this information here in the past would, has not been brought to the board in terms of some of these positions if they weren't new. So you'll see later on in the agenda that the increase of a 1.0 social worker is being brought to the board. So I'm trying to balance it in terms of trying to be transparent, trying to pick out processes that were used before, and so trying to figure out where that balance is in trying to provide information, but not get involved in day-to-day hiring decisions. And so, you know, I'm welcome to any suggestions here, trying to find the balance from where we're coming from to where we want to be in balancing those human resources decisions, I guess. And I think the bottom line here is the total dollar amounts in terms of that and working hard with staff members who are, you know, getting their input on how some of the things can be felt and working with a team of administrators on that. So that's why when the email went out as a follow-up to the board packet, here's some more details to help you in the decision-making that was sent out there, that was to provide to fill in that gap and it was sent out, I think, an hour or so after Kathy sent that out. So that was part of that to fill in the gaps and I know a couple of you did reach out between, over the weekend to say, can you clarify this for me? Does that make sense? And so, you know, there's nothing that's being hidden here, it's just trying to create some dialogue around that and not micromanage every, you know, every hiring decision in terms of that. So I'm open to whatever here, but I think.
Like you said, this isn't a hiring thing and I have nothing against any of the people that are here for, you know, that are on this for salary increases. I just feel that to me, it appears, to me, John, it appears a bit cryptic as to what we're doing and I want.
Okay, so, and again, if you have any follow-up questions or need more clarity, by all means, reach out to Mike and Lisa and I'm sure they'd be able to fill in the information, fill in the blanks to explain it.
It does say though that we are approving agreement of contracts and salary increases, both. That's what it says in the cover letter. So we didn't see any of these contracts that I'm aware of. It says that's what we're approving on, in the memo here, correct?
Under board consideration, actions, page eleven.
You want to take it?
Agreement of contracts and salary increases for supervisor and for supervisor and coordinator positions. Yep, I put the contract language in, I agree that these have been supervisor contracts that are being redone and we certainly don't have to approve, the contract language doesn't have to be there.
And I would say that these folks, yeah. In the past, we're trying to balance out what previously was called a work agreement and true contracts. I mean, again, state statute governs administrator contracts and teacher contracts. We're trying to balance, as, remember we had an HR audit back in December, to balance what has been given to a variety of employees, what were called work agreements and a contract and separate that too, because you have to be careful of calling something a contract if it really was not, as state statute governs in terms of that, so.
So that's where I'm a little confused then. We do not, it says board, new contracts and wage increases go to the board. These are not new contracts? These are renewals?
They would be renewed, I guess I'd be, what I would be cautious on in terms of where my.
From the future.
Is the phrase contract and what, it's not the state statute contract language that applies to, that is governed by timeline. We know that teachers have.
I understand that.
Contracts by May 15, June 15th and administrators have the end of January.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of new contracts, it says in here. Is that a policy then or was that a mistake in this?
I guess I would call it a mistake.
Okay, no problem. I mean, we're all new at this and you guys are doing a great job. I just needed clarification there and my only confusion, let me finish, my only confusion was what happened to the technology position? So, all good.
So this is how we find out that it's going away and that's, I'm not, so, I already said my piece on that. So the other thing about the contracts though is, do any of these job changes or additions or the change of duties or whatever require new contracts?
Well, all of those positions have, just like their teacher contracts, so the people that are instructional coaches or ITLs, they fall under that. So in terms of a new contract, if you will, they're all, they're only one-year pieces, yeah.
The question is, are like, do the job descriptions need to be changed? Does, if that needs to be changed, they need a new contract?
Correct, as of July 1, for July 1.
So this is only, these changes and salary increases are approved until July 1?
They're starting as of July 1.
Starting as of July 1. So we're approving contracts we haven't seen because you said they have to change them for different job descriptions and that kind of stuff to go along with what the land is asking.
Well.
But I think, did you say that we do not approve these contracts?
Right, or job descriptions. So what I'm saying is, is that, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that in order for the, in order for us to create a work agreement, to create a job description, we want the board to approve with the doubt, like there's an order of this stuff happening and I can't do it all at once without approval to one part, like there are multiple steps to this process. For me to go and create a job description and a contract presuming that the board is, that's a presumption on here. So the bottom line at the board, at the governance level is approving what the dollars are in terms of salary increases. The details that HR that works out in terms of what that looks like comes after the board has approved that we agree upon this. That's why the accompanying org chart was Pete's, you know, that's why those accompanying details gave you the background. So if that's an okay piece, we then create the accompanying job descriptions. The board has not typically approved individual job description.
So in the past, it seems to me that this overall kind of a change in things, elimination of position, probably would have come to us through a discussion with the personnel committee or something like that. Am I wrong or right? Do we have some idea prior to just approving, in a consent agenda, some of this stuff? Mike, Nancy, you mind?
I would say that's correct. I mean, we've usually had some discussion on changes prior to it just coming out of consent agenda and I know I had questions, Lisa, and you addressed those and sent out the, kind of the update on that. And I know I had questions, Lisa, and you addressed those and sent out the, kind of the update on that. We've never really done, I mean, to me, this is done kind of in a vacuum, and we've never really done it that way before. So, I think, yes, it would have come through the Personnel Committee first, at least.
Thank you.
It looks like some of the salary increases are effective May fifth, and the positions are effective July first, and the salary increases are-
There's only three positions due to the resignation, in which we need sort of an immediate solution to that, because that resignation came up very rapidly, so.
Yeah, those three positions that are directly affected by the, by the staff resignation, those are what kick in May fifth, because those duties would kick in on that day, maybe.
That's the manager technician and assistant?
Correct, correct. So really, that techno, that Technology Services Manager is meant to, meant to be the replacement of the Director of Technology. The Network Technician is meant to, that position was, you know, in the district, he was at a lower position, he's assuming, who's now the Technology Services Manager. There's movement up of our staff in that tech department. Everyone is moving up a level. While we're not calling the Technology Services Manager Director of Technology, the reason is that director is not an administrator position in this scenario. He becomes a Technology Services Manager consistent with the positions that are underneath the Director of Business Services. So while it might look like the true elimination of a position of Director of Technology, that Technology Services Manager is really playing that role.
So what's Chris do now? What's his title or role now?
It's like the Network Technician, that you see in the second phrase there.
So what I would ask in the future is, what you just said in writing? Some of us maybe didn't connect all the things that, like, the resignation and then that. So if you put that in writing to us and say, we are in, you know, this is April twenty-fourth, if it's happening, just a better communication on it, and I think we're good.
I agree.
Hopefully, these aren't ultimate facts.
So I would take a motion to approve item eight C, approval of personal recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
All right.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Item eight D. Eight D, page, page, I just had, I just forgot, I'm sorry, okay.
At twelve?
Starts at fourteen.
Yes, page fourteen, fourteen, one, eight, aye. For continuing students, twenty-eight Cs. Continuing students, are those students who attended the district school under a written inter-district transfer agreement in the twenty-seventeen eighteen school year? You mean twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year?
We didn't create the contract, it was written back.
I, I don't care where it came from.
I suppose, yes.
Okay, so, it should be twenty-sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two. All right, so, yeah, the contract needs change.
So can I, yeah?
So, thank you for noting that, and any other questions about this?
That was all I had, sorry, that was the easy one.
So, motion to approve item eight D. What about the-
With the amendment?
With the amendment, yes, we're making the change.
Okay.
Okay, so moved? Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, reports and discussion. Nine A is personalizing learning policies in Haderton Elementary and then the Whittle Middle and High Schools.
So I'll queue them up a little bit, they're each going to speak on their buildings, but we thought it would be important to bring back to the board, since the last time, I think, was on February thirteenth, where we were with some of those things, and just having the principal share what that looks like, the work that's been doing, a lot of work between now and then, and making it happen, putting staffing places in, into play. And tomorrow night, we do have a parent meeting scheduled for all of our K eight parents, so elementary parents and middle school parents to come and hear what this looks like, ask questions. And if you're unable to attend, this is Chris's favorite part, if you're unable to attend the meeting tomorrow night, we are doing a, our first Facebook Live video, so you can watch it from afar if you're unable to be there, and you can moderate. So Logan will be moderating questions at people, and it will be archived that way. So it's our first Facebook Live video for parents who can't attend, which was a suggestion by a parent last Monday night at the community update meeting. So, we're going, yep, we're all in.
Yes, keep up with your kids.
He does.
I mean, your own kids.
This is just a, this you have seen before, but this is a visual. Two years ago, we began-
Plex one-three, following that pilot program at the one-three level. The next year, we did a horizontal approach for the students who were in that third-grade Plex to roll up to a personalized environment in our fourth grade. So our fourth grade was a horizontal approach with some specialization that was happening as well, meaning that teachers at each level were specializing in particular areas rather than teaching in all content areas. So the plan for next year will be, what are we doing with the students that have been in the pilots now for two years and moving into fifth grade? You can just go back one, yeah. And, so our plan for next year is that not only will those fourth-grade students who have now been in a personalized environment for two years, the ones who had been in the first pilot, and then last year, we went across the entire level, the plan will be that all of the students will be involved for next year in a personalized environment as well at the fifth grade. Then, through our discussion with students, with parents, through the process we've had with our cohorts this past six months, which has been very intensive, we did some soul-searching around all of the good qualities we saw in that multi-age Plex one-two-three environment, and what we could really benefit from having learned in that environment, and then applying that to what I think, in talking with the parents, was a little bit confusing and mixing up, and as part of that is our messaging, a multi-age environment versus a personalized environment. And the idea is that our staff and our parents, you know, are more looking for a personalized environment for all students with personalized learning practices, rather than just having pilots, so.
So, so we decided, moving forward, that, that, that horizontal approach of everyone all-in at a grade level was really the way that we, we felt that we had learned so much, and this past year, particularly with how the fourth grade kind of rolled in. And so, we, through that cohort process, like Chris said, we're moving that across the grade levels now at each of the levels. So when you saw this in, in February, you might have wondered, okay, what does that all mean? So what we've been doing since then is really taking a look at, and discussing with our teachers, you know, where, where do their talents and gifts lie, you know? Which of them are interested in maybe grade-level changes, possibilities around specialization as well? And so, we've been reconfiguring some, making some grade-level adjustments, some specialization adjustments for the upcoming year. So, at both of our buildings, we'll have some teachers who haven't traditionally taught that particular grade level, perhaps move to a grade level, or narrow kind of their focus to a specialization area within a grade level that they might currently be, be teaching at. We're really taking that approach predominantly third through fifth, but we're exploring some more organic ways of kind of confuting people together and co-teaching possibilities in second grade as well. And first, in kindergarten, we're really, like, keeping those pretty standalone. But again, with the idea that there's co-teaching opportunities with, with perhaps a special education teacher at the grade level, and/or the host of other combinations. The teachers are getting really creative with their ideas. I think, talking with, with others at, you know, at other schools, hearing about, which you're going to hear about again a little bit, about the middle school and high school, I guess, has really spurred on some, some creativity on their part as well. So, moving towards that horizontal piece then, and really having every child not necessarily have that catchphrase of Plex, but really have personalization embedded in their classroom experience, their learning experiences.
Next. So, a couple of things to highlight with this particular, and these are things you've seen before as well, but a few of the things that we're definitely going to be bringing forward for next year. And remember, for some teachers, this is going to be very personalized in that some teachers are a little further along in this process than others. And we are going to be building our professional development around this, and some of the micro-credentials around personalized learning as well. But some of the bulleted items, we want to make sure that we are going universal with. As we start talking, the first one being a flexible space. The second one would be increasing technology, incorporating more technology into what we, whenever we brought on a new Plex pilot, for instance, we added technology to that environment. And we would like to continue to expand technology in those environments, understanding that we can't do it all at once. The idea for next year would be to bring technology, or more technology, into the fifth-grade environment.
Um, we're, we're really, you know, some of our programming already has been around a genius hour or some type of passion project, things like that. And so, we definitely want kids to have opportunities to self, you know, discover, and, and really have time for them to think about things that they want to learn about. So we're going to carve out time within, within their day to make sure that that happens, that, those high-interest projects. And then, again, I guess I'd even go so far, as I know we're talking a lot about classroom design, of, of grade-level design, but I think it's really important to notice, or to know, that both of our art classrooms have already embraced this as well, and they have, and you might have seen that if you've attended the art show that was recently here, in this room. And so, we're really talking about high interest beyond just classroom learning. It could be in the arts, it could be in, in other areas as well.
One of the areas in our Plex environments that the students really spoke to, and the teachers as well, was the social-emotional learning component. And we're talking about a social worker a little bit later. But, universal social-emotional instruction is something that came out as a very high-leverage point that we felt we wanted to do universally through all of our classrooms next year, building that community within the classroom.
And the next two bullets kind of fit together. Having that collaborative approach as, you know, as all educators, whomever, you know, who's ever working in that space, and really having that all-hands-on-deck idea that, you know, I know some of our teachers spoke about that during the February thirteenth presentation, but how kids will connect with different adults at different times during the day, and that gives them opportunities to, to see adults collaborating and have that modeling as well. Again, more collaboration. More collaboration, of course, and, and again, this one, this bullet really brings in that idea of, you know, where do the parents fit in all this? And how do, how do we keep them informed of what's going on, both in, you know, in the teaching and learning for their child? So, there's, I think we've learned some things this year through our, last year and this year through the Plex pilots, in that they've offered some family engagement times where parents could come in and see that learning either during the day or after hours, and that's been really powerful and really well-attended.
Just the last three bullets deal with providing more voice and choice for our students, customized learning path, and then the learner profile. These would be three components of personalized learning that while some of our teachers who have had professional development in this in the past would know something about, collective learning on, in these areas would be something that we would have to build. So, I think when you hear of some districts that say, or have pilots going, then they try to go universally throughout a building or throughout a district. Where we falter and fail is not proper training and proper professional development, the why for the adults as well as the students. So we want to make sure that as we build our horizontal approach, that we are taking a approach that is mindful of the fact that not all of our teachers are in the same place, so.
And we're able to do some of that work, is going to be happening right through the micro-credentialing process. So we've built those offerings right in, into the, to that, that guide that the teachers are looking at right now, so. So we've, we've got some opportunities there for, for that learning, to make sure that it's in place.
And our district professional development at the end of the year is going to focus on this.
Right. So that's elementary.
The only thing I would add is that Chris and Laurie have attended all of our focus group meetings with all of our parents, and have been really listening to that feedback, and also with our architects as we move forward with what some of those things are. So when, we think one of the things that our parents have, have equated Plex to is the physical space and walls being torn down. We want to be very cognizant that those are not necessarily equal in terms of that. And so, they do have some space, you know, what does this look like for some of the rooms, especially at third, fourth, fifth grade next year? And so, they've been working through with their teachers on potential, if there's any physical changes that they want next year. So the plans are to get those to the architects in the next couple of days, so they can say that this would be, this would not be a good use of space, because potentially in any plans for next year, this wouldn't make sense, because that, that wouldn't fit into that. Or, and so we're going to be doing that to be very cognizant of the changes that we might make to the physical structure would not be, you know, a good, a good use of our dollars in terms of the short-term thing. So there's, there's some spaces that just haven't been looked at in a way. We talked about today, just adding a doorway to a, a space, you know, out of the hallway, which currently does it, which makes it very hard to access, things like that. So, simple things like that, but, but in terms of that space, then we wanted you to be very aware that it doesn't necessarily mean tearing down walls across the board in terms of that, especially at the younger levels, where there's some of that piece of it. So being very aware of the physical space there, so.
Yep, the changes have been communicated in written form to the parents. We are planning that meeting tomorrow with the Facebook Live. And I've been fielding questions through a principal coffee, and through, you probably do the same, as well as through PTO meetings, and so far, it's been very positive. The reaction has been very positive.
We have fifty-one parents who are signed up for tomorrow night already, and five have signed up via Facebook Live, so, we have some of that. Eric, there's more to that presentation? There's the middle school and high school, sorry.
There's two more, two more slides.
Two more slides tomorrow. Lynn and Jackie, maybe they're excited not to present, but.
How long have your coffees and PTOs been attended?
I would say, PTOs, you mean numbers?
Yeah, because, I mean, those are a lot of the folks who are getting some exposure to it, so.
Yeah, I would say ten to twelve for a coffee, and, you know, twenty.
I moved away from the coffees, was having less attendance during the mornings that time, so, build in, Starbucks, Chris was telling me. So I built in, chat with the principal before the PTO meeting, because then I was kind of capturing them maybe in an, after, you know, after work hours, and if they were coming to PTO, and, or if they hadn't been coming, now maybe I've got them to stay for that, so. And that seemed to, to have some good attendance. Particularly of interest, the parents want to know, like, what other districts are, are a part of this journey and personalization? So, that's been really, and one of the parents, when I started naming off the district, she said, wow, we're really, that's good company. You know, they, she liked the fact that we were a progressive district in her mind, so.
We're also starting to think, I forgot this, about Makerspace as well, and trying to dip our, our big toe into that for next year.
Or both big toes.
Yeah, we'll see.
Well, I'm glad that, glad that you listened to the parents, because one of the first complaints that we got, the first year, was that we weren't communicating, and we didn't feel it, and I'm glad that you did, that's really good. So, help me understand, so, all the grades are going to have some personalized learning?
Like the, you know, I would say the learning, the learner profile, customized learning path, student goal setting.
Collaboration with adults, shared, sharing that personal practice and sharing responsibility for student learning.
And the other universal piece is that social-emotional learning component that we want to bring into all levels as well.
That doesn't mean walls are down everywhere, that it's a, it's a big part of sharing that personal practice can, can happen with walls up, so.
Because I was at the first, what was it, listening workshop, listening session on Saturday?
Yeah.
And there was a parent here who said, there's no way, I'm not my children, so what do we do with that?
So, well, I, let's see, I spent about an hour and a half after the meeting, and we talked through some things, and I think one of the concerns, and I'm not sure if that's the parent you're referring to, but one of the concerns was-
And I don't mean the person I've been, but, um, parents that say that.
Yep, it's, yeah. So I think the misconception is that Plex was a multi-age approach in which students didn't have desks or, or spaces to put their, their things. So, it was just too wide open, and, and so, we had to explain that that's not really what personalization is. It means giving every child what they need when they need it, which, which has something to do with flexible spaces, but it also has to do with the speed at which they're, they're getting information, curriculum, compacting curriculum or expanding it.
How they show proficiency as a learner. I think we need to move away from the word or the term Plex, that's what we've discussed as well, because while it means something positive to many, it might have some negative connotations or getting kind of the wrong message. That personalization is, needs to be within all of our classrooms to some, to some extent.
But we still have those-
Yep.
I wanted to use the word Plex, but those rooms, spaces that we built, right?
Sure, and those, and those can, those are gonna be used next year, in, in, perhaps in some co-teaching. So, for instance, the, the open two classroom space up in my, which was my second grade hallway, now, we're really talking about two people will cohabit, you know, have that space again, but the other two second grades are real excited about opportunities that they'll be able to do, will, they'll be able to use that space very flexibly. So, it won't be like, "This is my room, that is yours. These are our rooms," and how we choose to use them as we regroup students, and students work with each others. That's how we'll, we're gonna use that space.
In our, in our school, that's gonna be used by our first grade. Our first grade has already been working on, working the three of them together, and having opportunities where they can bring the first grade students together. More opportunities for students to maybe flex from one room to the other based upon reading levels, the, the teachers working more collaboratively, being able to reach more students. And, you know, that's been fun, helping them design that as well. It's also given me the opportunity to move all of my grade level team teachers close together again. So, we've really, a lot of people, well, not a lot, but several people are moving, are moving spaces. So, the configuration will be more conducive to more collaboration, because teachers are closer together.
And I'm moving a couple of teachers in grade level to kind of follow and, follow children, so that piece that the multi-age gave us in the sense of knowing kids over time can, can be in place next year as well. So, and there's been longstanding, you know, research on how that, that works for kids when they know a teacher maybe in year two. So, gonna have some teachers moving up with some kids.
Because that was, that was a concern that I had, 'cause some of the parents, the beauty for them, when you had first or third in the same space, if you had someone that was by age in third grade, but they weren't necessarily at a third grade expectation, there wasn't any big draw of attention if they maybe grouped with the second or first grade for math, and then floated back to their third grade contemporaries, because everybody was in the same space.
Right.
And it didn't call attention, and the same thing, if you had a first grader who was an accelerated reader, they could drift over to this corner, and then come back over, and it just wasn't, it wasn't a spotlight on that particular child moving one way or another. My concern is if we go back to, I won't call them rigid, but if we go back to more age grouping for bands, and if you have somebody who needs to float and shift, it sounds like that's a little bit more noticeable now, that if you've got a third grader that's more comfortable than first grade, they're leaving their third grade band, and then somebody's not there, or you have an addition to move up or back.
Well, actually, like in our current fourth grade structure, one of the best emails in support for Plex I received, right around the time we were, the cohorts were working, was from a fourth grade student who has been struggling through the years. And he wrote to me and said, you know, "Never have I been able to be, like, kind of just met with what I needed and where I needed it. I usually had to leave to get that." But because of the cross-grade piece, and because of the co-teaching model, we were able to, you know, really, those, those ranges still occur in the upper grades, they just, we've just handled them in a different way. So, he's been able to stay in the classroom, have those interventions met, meet him at the door, as opposed to him leaving. So, there's been a lot of positive constructs that we put in place with them, with the, across the grade, that we're really excited to try to work through as we bring this up to fifth as well, so...
And that's good.
I, I hear what you're saying.
No kid wants to be spotlighted for being accelerated above, or not meeting up.
Right.
And no one wants to be, "Oh, I have to leave math, 'cause I have to do it somewhere else, or go on from the room," or come back in.
And, and I think when you add the specialization piece, and teachers are able to focus a little bit more, you can't, they have more opportunity to plan for those experiences. Also, the, when we mentioned all hands on deck, it was the, the push-in model for a lot of our support staff as well, high and low, to be able to work in conjunction with the classroom teacher. And when there's a co-teaching option, and you have two or three teachers now who are able to share the instructional components, "Hey, I'm gonna take this level, you're gonna take this level," and you can kind of tailor it that way, but it's really, what we found was that three, three levels, three, probably a little bit too much variation, and we have enough range within our, our band.
Yeah.
But that still does not mean that when acceleration, when true acceleration beyond is necessary, that we wouldn't do that.
And I think, to get to your point, Quinn, I'm not sure if I answered that correctly, but, or enough, but we're hoping that, we, we wanna bring parents in to be able to see, but there's a struggle of looking at the rooms and thinking, "That's what it's going to look like." So, as we're kind of building this as we go, we're trying to help, help bring the parents along, and it could mean some, you know, come in while we're, while we're underway, so that you can see the classrooms, and see kind of how that, how it works for the kids. And we've done some things with, obviously with the one, three, and fourth grade, with the parents coming in, and the kids walking them through those student-led conferences, things like that. But in a, that's for those parents and those students.
Operational.
We really, we really need to do that operationally across all the grades. Those student-led conferences are really powerful, so...
So, as we transitioned to middle school, both of them mentioned, that's okay, Lynn can come up. We talked about this maker spaces, and I know Lynn and Stephanie were at the library meeting last week, and so, we've continued, and Lynn's gonna talk a little bit more about this maker space concept, so you will be hearing more about that, if that's a new term to you, what that means. But part of the CT coordinators piece of it is to create those working, those maker spaces in our upper elementaries, and through our middle school, and actually teach that, and that, that ability to sort of create and have our students do that. So, it's, it's much more intentional even at the middle school, but that's part of what we're looking at across the board for that, and I think there's some potential even for our community to get more involved in that, so. And there she is.
When we started talking about the whole personalizing learning district-wide in fall, we had the personalized learning steering committee get together, and we had teachers from every level that were looking to identify, going through the, the design, the learning design process, and just trying to figure out exactly what is it that we are looking at. Personalizing learning is a shift for, bigger shift for people at the secondary level than people at the elementary level at this point. So, when we had our different various levels and groups of teachers, and we're trying to figure out what would be the best things, what do we need, what are we looking at? You know, elementary, you saw how they were kind of morphing what they've been doing into something that looks just a bit different, and has shifted in a few areas. The middle school typically, like the high school, is on a very traditional schedule yet, and still very traditional with our use of time and our use of resources. So, the teachers who were on that steering committee said, "Well, really, when we're thinking about personalizing learning, we haven't been there yet, we're not doing it yet. What are the things that are going to have to be, how do we set the stage, so to speak, on how to, you know, have things ready for us to kind of jump in and then figure out what we're doing, and, and start learning the process?" So, those teachers agreed that our traditional schedule was not going to help us at all, and it was actually going to hinder us and hold us back a bit. So, we started focusing on how do we reallocate time, minutes in the day, how do we regroup professionals, how do we regroup our learners, how do we create some times within the day that might be flexible for learning, as well as flexible in space eventually? And if you recall, we, we threw up a really rough prototype of, we really wanna see some extended blocks of core time, where we have time for students who need more time, either to, to help, you know, maybe build a some more solid foundation, maybe they need a little bit of help on the remedial side, maybe they need to be shot off the front end on the GT side, they need extensions. So, those longer chunks of time, everyone agreed would maybe be helpful to, to getting there. Some of the other things that we identified outside of the longer blocks of core time was a need for some type of advisory period within the day. We see a lot of our kids are coming up with a little bit more social emotional learning needs as we go through time here, and so, we wanted a common time where we had every adult in the building, every available adult, assigned a group of students that becomes sort of their, their catch group, and you see a catch twenty-two, and the twenty-two doesn't mean anything at this point, but we thought it was cute, so we left it there. But the catch group is that you, you just have one adult, if you're a kid, that you connect with every day as you come into the building, you build a relationship with that adult, if things are falling apart, you know that you can go back to that adult, and they know a little bit more about you than maybe other teachers and adults throughout the building. So, we do have that incorporated in there, and catch twenty-two, we like to start it out as a twenty-two minute chunk of time, and as we've been morphing around our minutes, it's turned into thirty minutes, but the catch twenty-two just seems to have stuck. So, we're not sure if it'll stay there, but for now, we, we kind of like it. The catch is a good phrase, because we just catch everyone as they come in, we see, "Are you okay? Is everything good? What's the day gonna look like? What do we need to get set? How do we get our mindset around learning?" And then, off we go into the rest of the day. We also identified a need for times where we could deliver interventions, we can deliver extensions, that happen outside of the core academic time. So, some of those things can't happen when we're in those blocks, because if students are in language arts, and social studies, and math, and science, we're not, we don't want to pull them from those necessarily, to give them what they need in intervention forms. So, we wanted a separate chunk of time, and that surfaces, surfaces what is called connect time in this schedule. So, there's a fifty-minute chunk of time where we will begin to identify, how do we connect with students, how do we hit that personalized learning perspective, where we give everybody what they need? And I'll go back to what Chris and Lori were saying, we have some misconceptions, even in our, our teaching ranks right now, because it's all very new to us, but with our parents particularly, where we think personalized learning means, everybody just, "Here you go, kids, there's your learning targets, go off and do it." And that's really not what it's about. It is, some kids, we're going to need a more traditional setup. It's not walking away totally from a traditional setup, but it is allowing kids that don't need it, or don't flourish in it, to, to get away from it, and provide structure for the kids that need more structure. So, that connect time is going to be identified for anything from interventions, to extensions, to perhaps we're looking at some mini-course offerings on a shorter-term basis that could be built into that time if students are not in need in other areas, or not assigned otherwise. And then, lastly, we just really wanted to make sure that we are grouping our professionals so that they really could start blending content areas, you know, the days of teaching every content in a silo are quickly coming to an end, because that's just not how life works. So, we, we don't do math in real life in a silo, we do it for a purpose with an intention. It's part of life, it's part of survival, it's part of being able to be financially literate. So, we don't do math for the sake of doing math, therefore, in these schedules, it only makes sense that we start moving into an environment where there is a big picture purpose for everything that we're doing. So, we, we looked at grouping professionals. Where we are still a bit unsure right now is sometimes when we have, like, you know, our, our core teachers grouped together, and we want all two-hundred-ish kids in a core area at one time, the physical space is the next thing we're gonna have to be talking about, because we said we're not gonna just arbitrarily knock down walls, but we also have to think about our classroom space, which our classrooms are, run a bit small to begin with. So, we'll figure that out as we go, we have enough big spaces in the middle school, that I think the physical space won't get in our way, we'll just have to be kind of creative in our, in our thoughts. Questions so far?
So, the catch twenty-two, is that, is that, that's able to count as instructional time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then, is it sort of like, kind of a modern purpose for all of these?
It will have...
You probably wanna stay away from those traditional type terms, because you're not being traditional with it.
Yeah, and, home room, if it means a home base where you're safe and you're accounted for, that's great. However, it's gonna have a little more purpose than that, in that that's when we will deliver, like, our PBIS lessons, our internet safety lessons, our character development things, you know, organizational skills, all of that sort of stuff where kids, especially at the middle level, you know, they come in and go, "Ugh." So, a little focus time.
Maybe home room kind of lost its purpose over the years, and now it's catching up.
Oh, see, catching up.
Exactly, on purpose. Please, you caught that. So, the, that first core one hundred minutes, right, is that nine twenty-five to eleven oh five?
Sure, nine twenty-three to eleven oh three. Well, yeah, that one's a little updated, yeah, you're right. I'm not gonna know what it is. Yes, nine oh five, eleven oh five.
So, is that, is that the idea that they're gonna be in a space doing various things for like a hundred minutes, is that the idea?
They will get their core content during that one hundred minutes. As we learn to work within that time, that's gonna be a shift for teachers who are used to doing fifty-two minutes and out, fifty-two minutes and out. We're gonna have to learn how to flex that time a bit. So, it could start as simple as, you know, chunking out, okay, we have some math time, we have some social studies, we have some language arts, we have, and then some days we might say, "We want more time for language arts, how do we infuse some of our science into language arts," or vice versa. And teachers are gonna have a little more creative license, much as they already do in the elementary levels, where they've got the same band of kids, and maybe like range over subject areas a little bit more freely than they do in middle school. So, that time will be creatively used for how teams see fit.
So, to go with that, then, my, my question and concern, or however, my, my curiosity is how you're dealing with this, is, I know pretty much from kids through college students, the research has showed that like somewhere around fifty minutes, you're kind of hanging on the end of people's ability to sit still, their attention span, and that kind of stuff. So, is that what research has been in the past? So, how do you, are there periods of decompression in that?
Yeah, there's, there's no way we're sitting still for a hundred minutes. And actually, the research says it correlates, it correlates directly to your age. So, if you're twelve years old, you've got twelve solid minutes, and then move on, and take a break, do something, so...
So, it's based on my...
At some point, it regresses, is what you're saying?
Or is it teetering?
There might be a taper off point somewhere along that you took off, but...
So, what are the, or, I have my question for that one hundred minute area?
And that's gonna be up to teams. So, that'll be up to teams to decide, we're not gonna say, "Okay, you're teaching this long, you're breaking this long, you're teaching this long, you're breaking this long," because that gets us kind of scarily back into that traditional mindset again. So, I think it's gonna have to be based on what students need individually. Some students might be perfectly happy to sit for thirty minutes, some people are like, "Okay, I did my ten minutes, I need to like take a little lap around the room and come back." So, I think that's where we're gonna have to get really good at those learner profiles we keep referring to, and really understanding what each kid needs in that moment. And I think we can't, we can't keep treating ourselves like a herd, that we all do the same thing all the same time. So, that, I think that's how we're gonna attend to that.
Does that include that, maybe grouping kids on the one hand, to, I'm not sure, of ability and that kind of thing, and, or maybe, I mean, various ways, right? So, I'm just trying to figure out how many different ways you can have, this way you've got ability, that way you've got attention span, I mean, you're talking about, if you've got, if you've got sixty kids in a group, you're talking about sixty different categories, pretty much, so...
And I think that's where that, that catch, that catch time at the beginning of the day is going to help us, because between the catch time, the extended core times, we're gonna spend a heavy amount of time at the beginning of the year, not really teaching and learning content as much, as learning about learning, and learning about ourselves as learners. I mean, I think teachers will be into this, I think students will be into this, we need to know how we best learn as an individual, how we can fit into a group. So, I think with that heavy emphasis at the beginning of the year of kids understanding, "This is what I need, this is how I learn best, these are the people that I may work best with in this situation, these are the people I might work best with for this situation." I think with that focus time at the beginning of the year, that will make those longer chunks of time much more manageable and easier to understand as we go through the year. But that is the beauty and the challenge of personalized learning, because there's gonna be a lot of front-load work that will have to come with that.
Could it be a speed learning for...
For all of us, yeah.
For part of the year?
Yep, yep, for everybody, yeah.
One of the things that I wanna just emphasize that Lynn has, that really in this model, is that connect time, which we're very excited about. I think right now, we haven't been able to differentiate, I think, John, to your question about horizontally, that's that connect time in which we're gonna be able to take, from struggling learners to our kids who probably need more challenges, and right now, don't need that extra study hall or flex time, or whatever it is. That's what we're very excited about during that time, or, as we've talked about, if they have a passion or an interest, and intervention is a fluid in and out of that, so you might need for six weeks some interventions, or ten weeks, and then, then you've sort of caught up. And that, that, that ability to take kids horizontally during that connect time, I can see a teacher if I want to, I might need help in social studies, but I don't need help in language arts, or I'm good, and, and now I can go challenge myself in a different area. And I think that's the part that's been missing from our schedule, is that ability to catch all of our students who need to be more challenged, so, yeah. So, that's, that's why I think the schedule really speaks to that, which we haven't had a place for that across the board, to be able to work with all of those students.
And the other part that Dr. Olson said I was going to speak about, and then I totally ignored it, was the maker space factor. And we are going to have teachers work with students in a maker space. There is a, a lot of data seminar and collaboration time built in for, for the core teachers particularly. So, these teachers are going to take, within an applied block at each grade level, they will be manning a maker space, and as soon as we really figure out what that is, I'm sure it'll be great, but we gotta do some learning and some, some research on that too. But having the time, again, like the whole schedule, having the time and the, and the
space dedicated to it is kind of our take on the first step of getting there because now we have that area within which to work. So the maker space stuff is going to be very exciting. And it's something that the, the core area teachers can kind of share out and rotate and really maybe starting, our first thoughts of the scheduling team was to start with the science teachers because they could put sort of a STEM focus on things. But then it becomes very fluid as well, like everything else, where other teachers could say, hey, I'm going to take the maker space for a couple of weeks with math and do this, or I'm going to take it with social studies and science and do, or social studies and language arts and do that, or. So I think the whole thing offers a lot of flexibility, the whole schedule offers flexibility.
I know you guys have been doing a lot of time trying to-
No, we did it in 10 minutes.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm sure you were, I don't know, were you trying to shoot for any kind of particular logical order of this one needs to come before that and this needs to come after that or something? I mean, because I realize you can't do it all at once. So between the grades, there, there doesn't seem to be any, this always follows that kind of thing going on. Is that, you don't see any particular-
Nope, we, we identified the priorities of those bigger core blocks of time, the catch time, the connect time, and we built everything around that. Anything else in variance in schedule has to do with when we can access certain teachers because we do share out some people between buildings or, you know, so some of that will also drive the schedule. You know, we can only have access to certain people at certain times, so that will kind of move around when you can offer applied classes at different grade levels.
Is it going to be a new state lunch in the sixth graders come out of 100 minutes to lunch? And then the-
We're not going to tie them up for 100 minutes, I promise. They're going to get to move.
This would happen, maybe they're the same, and then the seventh graders, the last 100 minutes of the day, that'll be just kind of-
Do we get the elementary? That's what we do.
Yeah, yeah. If we see, my question is, would you, your, your building, thanks, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
So the changes at the high school include a lot less structural changes. I think when we presented the first time, we shared that based on a timeline and having kids really select their courses, we weren't in a position of really being able to completely change where we were at. So we came up with a variety of options that we thought were doable, and the team decided to move forward with the nine-week seminars. So up there, we, we previously have presented to you all of the proposals that teachers had. On the screen are the courses that students actually signed up for. So you can see that some are, are very, very popular, others a little bit less, but knowing that kids had a very short amount of time to actually learn about the seminars before they selected courses, I think that the enrollment is fantastic and I think that kids and teachers are really excited about the change and being able to switch some of that learning. So with the changes at the middle school schedule, I can see, in working with her and some of our shared staff, there'll be a lot of opportunities as they move forward next year to kind of look at that and see how changing the schedule at the high school can allow for greater opportunities for the collaboration and personalization. So within each of those seminar courses, there is more than one teacher. In some cases, there's three teachers. So depending on the number of students, it kind of drives if it's a teaching assignment or a duty assignment, and all of those teachers are aware of how they'll be working through that next year. We are going to be designing a new course program for them to walk through. So they will go through the process of, you know, how will we go about taking learning targets from a variety of content areas and bringing them together, to how do we collaborate as professionals, because that'll be something new for teachers at the high school level outside of kind of the co-teaching with a special education teacher. And then, you know, the assessing and how they'll do everything with the students. So they will go through that process as kind of a cohort group, and then I think that information will help them as we begin to develop and change other courses at the high school level. They'll be able to apply what they learned in that, that seminar preparation course. So very high interest topics. You can see some of the specialties and interests of our high school teachers as well as kind of where some of those interests fell for the high school students. So just a small, I mean, I feel like it's a small start, but I also feel like at the high school level, there'll be this kind of parallel path where teachers are just learning about how do they personalize within the other courses, that we didn't necessarily change the whole structure of the course or the title of the course, but they're still going to be learning how to personalize within, in those environments. But we stick with 50-minute classes, semester-long. So a student, if they chose or if they had room in their course, they could, technically they could be in four of those in one school year, depending on what they had room available for, because in a semester, you could have, you know, two of them connected to one another in one hour. Questions?
Crime scene investigation expert on staff.
So that involves a teacher who's licensed in psychology. It will include a biology/chemistry teacher as well as art. I think those are the three that are connected there where they'll be pulling in the learning targets. They will, we have it designed. So the tricky part in the master schedule is taking the person who's assigned to it, maybe as a teaching assignment, and then aligning it to when someone else will have prep because they might be coming into it as a duty assignment. And then we need the availability of a science lab in order to get them in there so that they can actually solve the crimes.
I assume the teachers are super excited.
Oh, the teachers are super excited. We met, I think about a week, week and a half ago, we had a faculty meeting, and then the people stayed that are working on the seminars afterwards, and we started talking about just that whole development and them walking through the process of developing the courses with us, supporting them, and, and they're really excited to get started. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you all for your time and for giving us the update on the information. Thank you. So item nine, the facilities planning ongoing discussion for 2018 referendum and proposed 2017/2018.
Yeah, so we continue, we've been giving you updates on facility planning, so just to let you know that we've been working with a survey company, and Logan has sort of a draft of that information that will go out in the viewpoint in terms of the survey piece of it. Hopefully to get you that by the end of the week so you can see. So the survey, School Perceptions has developed sort of this intro piece of it and then a link to the survey, so trying to put that within a viewpoint to give them some background information. So that's one piece of the update since the last time we met, two weeks ago. And then the other piece of it, I think, that was brought up to us a week ago, Monday night, from one of our parents, or a couple of the parents in the, the audience of our community update, who sort of said, hey, we looked at that and somehow, and again, somehow it wasn't, at that point, we were not clear on when a referendum was going to be, if we were going to referendum, when it would be, when we set that calendar, and we had talked about, and actually when we had set the school calendar for next year, we sort of had a tentative one depending upon if the school's start date would change, that's still out there. You know, the likelihood of that, I think, is anybody's guess at this point. But, so one of the questions that was brought up and a follow-up is, you know, based on the experience that happened in the district last time in which that fell during that time and participation in that, whether or not that's something that we want to consider in terms of looking at that time, we're still, you know, we might be time enough that we could consider that. Principals are willing to talk about this year. I know that there was some initial pushback from parents because our spring break did not necessarily align with other districts, but in terms of when a break is needed, both by teachers and students, it actually fell quite well. And then having a four-day weekend around Easter holiday, for those who separated, gave it just another little piece of it. So in terms of that, and they also, and we talked about, so feel free to, but I think initially there was this, you know, if, if, if a parent might be, work in a school system that that created a disconnect, but remember, not all of our parents work in other school systems, and so the question about that piece of it. So it's out there to decide whether or not the board, I was not here last time, whether or not that's a big enough item that the board would want to consider that, but it was something I felt we needed to bring to the attention that as we've now sort of narrowed down a timeframe for next April, that that would fall during the week that's currently slated to be our spring break week.
So again, the purpose of tonight's conversation is just to decide if you want to consider the prospect of moving spring break week to the week before. Instead of, so everyone, I hope you're all on it, if there's interest in pursuing it, if you're doing some more research, we can, we just wanted to see feedback now, essentially, the board, if I can.
I just want to point out this, like primaries, February, we have a new plan for the 20th date, we want to go on April 3rd. There's not, there's no big race on, it's like, really, there's traditional and primary boards, who would, means the governor is meeting the fall, in October 20th. So that's not this flight.
But then we're kind of two months, one more, six weeks.
I'm not suggesting, I was pointing out, or-
I'm not disagreeing.
Is there a guaranteed primary, only if there's, I thought there's, is there a guaranteed primary in February, or only if there's enough?
Only getting more.
So at what point would we know, like the end of December, is that when people have to file by, probably?
You got, you got to go on.
We didn't know those, I think that he does not have them hanging out.
Very 20th.
With that, if you wanted to go and you wasn't one, is that one of those, I don't know. I'm just curious because as far as pushing spring break for this, although you want the voter turnout that you want, I think that it seems like they're trying to push agenda by, or moving spring break out of the way and try and get people to come and vote. That's the kind of situation I see there, and that's where I could see some parents coming back negatively with that of your changes just for this vote, that decision.
So, I mean, Mr., how synced up are we right now with where the district's at with the spring break?
What I will tell you is that at CISA right now, we're getting ready to survey parents in the entire southeastern Wisconsin. I think Muskego and a couple of superintendents are taking the lead on, they're trying to get a common spring break week for this entire part of the state. So that's, it would not be for 17, 18, but it would be starting in 18, 19. So it's hit or miss. There are some districts that have this mid-March because it's consistent and they like it before spring sports start because it's, and it's just sort of a midway point before you, you know, and so it seemed like this year that there were a lot that were, you know, a week following that, that Easter holiday because it's been their tradition and we're always, wherever that holiday tends to fall, it fluctuates up to six weeks, so.
So I guess once again, do we, do we have any idea, how many of the districts are kind of on the same weekend as us that are in this area?
You mean next year?
For next year.
I haven't looked, I do know that Greenfield and Greendale, because we tried to align our three districts' calendars, are sitting at that piece of it. I couldn't tell you beyond that.
So they're on the same weekend as us?
Currently, they are, correct, right. We were trying to align professional development days and some other things so we could share some services there.
Because, you know, I, I don't know if you agree on or not, but I had calls from parents about, and their teachers in other districts, you know, about, you know, can we try and synchronize this a little better? And then I also had, I had calls about, well, you know, we tried to schedule family vacation and something, and I get worried about, if we can move it for the better, that's one thing, but then we might have people that have already scheduled a cruise or something like that, because we do have those kinds of things.
And that's where we're having the conversation tonight and dragging it out to get people the time to provide the feedback now.
Sure.
If 99 people out of 100 say it works and one person is booked a trip, I don't know that we're going to deny it based on, one, if the overwhelming majority is to go one way or the other, but we're giving people the option to provide.
We've got to hear from 100 of us.
I just don't, I don't think we should change that. It is all the parents, one that I'll get those things, like, personally, don't think we should change that. I think we should make sure we're ready for the referendum, and all of those, and we're ready, and we should, and especially if it's that vacation, and what, August 14th is the next prime, I mean, that will be a government, it's a very big, very big opportunity to follow. I just wanted to say, I don't want to see us change that.
I think you're cutting your own throat if we don't do it. If we don't move it, we need, okay, I, I get your point, Kevin, but we need parents to vote for this. It becomes to me, if I'm not a parent and I walk in there, and we have so many of the elderly people that do vote time and time again, and they look at that question and they say, we belong to this, and they say, increase my taxes? No. We need every available parent to vote for this. That's out there. In my opinion, that's the truth. The residents can decide what they want. I got a call Saturday from a member of the advisory committee after reading in the now that we were putting it out to November, and he's, and this person's like, my God, we were, that advisory committee was over, this, what's going on? And I, and I talked through as to what was going on. Is there a disadvantage educationally to moving the vacation?
Pita calorie, I'm a LSHP, because I don't, you just have-
I don't really put the calorie out there early, but to be very great, parents still schedule vacations that work with their, their work schedule. So, and, and many try to do, I mean, I'm not saying everybody, but part of our, just let us know if you're going to go on and, and we have parents that, you know, because of their work constraints, too, that maybe they work in the industry that they can't take so long, or, you know, it's more expensive or whatever the case may be, they, they take vacations when, um, certainly they take it to desperation school, they do, they don't give them a lot of vacation throughout the course year.
Just to piggyback off of what you said, you want to give parents the opportunity to vote, whatever way they choose to vote. We want to make sure that they're going to vote, and to have a chance to vote. It's been asked to you. We never-
You're right, you're right. However, we saw last time that many people did request a duty vote. So, when you put, go ahead.
I think last time was different, because we didn't realize that it was during spring break until it was late, and, you know, when I was in middle school telling people, this is during spring break, so vote, you know, and this was February or something, March, you know, I don't remember, but, you know, it was pretty close. Calendar's been out, and I'm not sure that I'm a favorite, you know, calendar, it's like, so many people now vote early. And if you get the word out that, with the red mark, then people will vote early. I do that last different, but you don't have to request that, you know, you just walk in and vote early, and that's available for like a whole week, you can have, a couple weeks.
Before the election, though, that wasn't the case a couple of years ago.
You just have to go down to the city hall and post it here.
Right.
Because there's a big difference in distance there. I think we should bring it to a vote and, and associate. I think there's, I think, we, we don't know until we have, we need no vote out there. No, we don't know that. We need to put ourselves in the best possible position to make this work, otherwise, why are we even doing it?
Okay, so we have some, we have an event coming up tomorrow.
We do.
Would it be possible to build in some sort of impromptu survey about funds?
Yeah, I don't know how we're present, I mean, like I said, there's 51 keep, I know. So I mean, the question is, you can-
But just-
Survey parents, you can do whatever, you can, whatever you, whatever the board wishes. I felt that I needed to, after it was brought to our attention, bring it to the full board's attentions, you were fully aware, and then make the decision based on that. I, it's really, I was not here last time, it was not it. So we can, we can survey there, we can send a survey out to parents to see what it make, like, it's, or we can do nothing, like, or that's really, whatever the board would like to do in terms of gathering it.
We're already there to talk, we're not even parents. We're not done, we're going to decide what we're going to do. It just feels pretty mature to me to start changing the pace because we might, we're not-
So here's what we need to hear. We've had some concerns to say we're not getting enough funding. Now we're trying to correct and say that's the parent case, you want to go, we're saying we're getting a hard one. So we can't have it both ways. The last time we- we're gaining a help, so if we can't have it both ways, the last time we met, we talked about April two thousand and eighteen, you were reasonable target, that's when we correctly said we wanna move towards this fits in conjunction. So, if we think it's a possibility, now is the time to potentially make changes work. If we don't go the right way, having it be brought doesn't, doesn't destroy it, we can still cheat out, do it anyway, but at least we've prepared that conversation, we've prepared for it. Very exciting.
So, I wish.
Why don't you ask me if, if, what I, I mean, that's where we're coming from.
I just wanna say, to, you know, get the referendum, so I am sure that it is something we need to do, to maybe also vote first. I mean, to me, that's more important than right now, changing the whole vacation schedule. I agree with you, but we need, I guess, to, um, um, I don't know. I think the, the lock-in, we need to schedule it. I think that's good. More for your back than anything, so, it's pretty upset, you know, twice, I mean, you know, that's true.
Whoa, uh, year off, you gotta be, you must have a lot of money before you're a year off, unless you're going somewhere. We just, we just got back from vacation, I mean, I, I know, Greenfield just got back yesterday. So, today, things back to school. So, I, I think it was really stressful to think that so many people have planned it, uh, I don't agree with that.
I wouldn't say so many, but, um.
Okay, so, is anybody else have any other thoughts about this?
So, if we arranged our calendars so it would kind of coincide with Greenfield, Greenfield, so that we changed ours, uh, it's very.
No, the only, the, so, again, the spring break thing, there are only gonna be parents who work in that district, and again, I wanna make sure that we understand that not every single parent works in a different school system, so we may have heard that, no, that would be only that week. The professional development days were what we were looking at aligning with, so we could do paraprofessional training and support staff and teacher training. It was not necessarily for the spring break, so the only thing we would do is flip-flop the spring break week, so it would keep everything else intact. Yep, yep, good question, though.
Okay. So, yeah, I was watching information you came before the eighth meeting, uh, we come back and discuss it, May eighth, and then decide for, 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 uh, until twenty-second.
So, what information would the board like to see prior to May eighth, and in terms of what you either do or do not know? Is there any data besides, I mean, I know people have opinions tonight, but what, is there anything, or is that, I guess, I'm trying to decide what my work is between now and then.
Do you know what those, those, uh, the surrounding districts other than the two that you mentioned, when there's spring breakers?
Okay, I can get that.
So, are those the whole social media surveys?
For, for our parents, you mean, or just, 'cause it, our community members, the spring break week really has no impact, so you're talking to parents?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay.
Always a good knowledge.
I think, 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 does that really, so, trying to, you know, you know, you know?
Okay, so, uh, thank you, so, um, discuss that again during the May meeting, I love you, man. Okay, item ten, action items, you have two action items tonight, each of them should be discussed on April tenth. Item ten, a capitol lease counter, does anyone have additional questions? So, you know any motion to approve, so, second?
Aye.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Non-motion carries. Item ten B, additional one point of FTE social workers, does anyone have additional questions?
I think we're still asking, I have to, especially where we get presentations, social material, bills, if you're taking, you know, and there's, um, there's a lot of, you know, social work, so, given that, my experience, when you have, it was, I don't have a lot of, I know, there's still a lot of, uh, it was, we do, we do, um, we're very, very busy, and we're really trying to help our students, actually, we're trying to help our students, and we're just trying to, if I have to.
All right, um, I agree with you, I, I owe a little bit of my, but, uh, this, the issue's so critical, I, I, I just, I'm really glad, I'm really glad and proud that we are moving this way, yes, I, I think, I think, I think, but, uh, and it's just the, uh, it's just, you know.
I think we have the students, the variations, the passing, the situations, the, the, the things that happen, and, 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 you know, it's, 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 it's okay.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second, sorry, on favor? Aye, proposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, item ten C, final notice of non-renewable birthday statute, does anyone have additional questions?
Hmm. So, uh, as it says here, is final notice is because of the elimination of, of face, correct?
Trouble elimination.
Yes, suspension face, and that used to be, uh, a required course, and then it became a, an option, an elected course, and now it's gonna be no choice. So, I know, I know, face is not, is the, the course thing is not something that we need to approve, or just true, since it is not a mandatory course, it gets eliminated, um, but, uh, I would just like to express my concern that, um, what we appear to be doing, uh, in this district, among all the positive things, is we're, um, we're, I think we're producing students who can't write courses, and therefore, either sign their name or read somebody else's, they, they can't, um, use a keyboard, with all the electronic stuff going on these days, it's not, I've had many, and there's no keyboard class or anything like that, and they won't be able to, as I had the conversation with somebody else, sew a button or put a needle. I just don't know, with all the positive direction things we're, we're doing, I just don't know that this is a good, right direction, um, for all the, what you might wanna call old-school stuff that actually was there for reasons, so.
Okay.
Thank you, again, one, again, I understand that, but this is my opportunity to say that as told to me previously by yourself.
Okay.
Can I ask for a clarification? Just, this, this statement is called suspension and not elimination, I wanna be clear on that. It's a program suspension, not a program elimination.
Um, it, for all practical purposes, has the same effect. It only has a different effect if you bring it back.
So, I, I, I just, that's your AMB point. Kids on the, right, okay? Is what you're saying?
Versus sign, there's a difference.
And that, that was covered in, they were learning that in face.
No.
Okay.
No, no, we're learning on a keyboard and a face either.
Okay. I was gonna, I was gonna have the same question. How was that?
It's a, it's a, it's a broader point that I'm making, is some of the basic skills of life, that we're so, you know, we're interested in, in the, in, in the skills and knowledge that a child has as they exit our district, and it seems to me that, that some of the basic skills of life, we are eliminating from the district, and I'm concerned about that.
Well, I think that's incorrect, I think, I think, we're obviously, that's not, uh, I think, we're on the table here, and I know I have two kids that, that like, that came through this district, and you know I do that, I, I think, I think, I think, I think they also want to, it's, 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 I, I think you are putting the correct statements out, you have, to me, very incorrect.
It's based on, that's, I mean.
Anybody's your child?
My child grew up in a, in a different household, and some kids, it's like, oh.
I, I, I have heard that, we, I think that's each person, um, anyone heard, so, perhaps.
No, it's not accurate, in terms of completely eliminating.
We're introducing it in third grade, and we're not, but we're not reinforcing, in the sense of handwriting courses in fourth and fifth at this time.
Do we have a curse of in third grade, and, uh, how do you enforce it in fourth grade?
Or just typing class?
Do you have typing in third, fourth, and fifth grade?
Third, fourth, fifth.
I think for what, a couple of weeks or something like that, is that right?
Um, it, it, it really, it depends on how the, the use of the, the laptops and the cards, so, some of the teachers do them pretty much over the course of like six weeks, actually, so it depends on how many times you do it during the week, and yet, to.
Right, it, it, my, it, it just, I mean, it's just a time point, that, I mean, you can watch the kids and they, they don't do what would, if they don't, they don't type properly, they don't know how, and this is, and yet, we're pushing, obviously, because of the future, more and more of this equipment, um, they, they're missing a basic life skill. I have to take a tape rate back, back in the day, and we, if not everybody was on typewriters, we didn't have to use, everybody could typewriters, but anyway, that's not what we're discussing here, but that's what I'm gonna say, because it was relevant to the face.
But I wanna say that what you said, you said that we don't teach anymore, you know, that we don't, no, no, John, this is what you said, you, you have to play the tape, but we have, we have, we have, we have administrators, administrators that say that that's not true, I want that corrected, but it's one of the statements, is the correct statement?
My, my statement stands, and I don't, let me just change, let me put a word in there, I don't think we're, we're leaving them with it effectively for the future, I think it is minimized too much, and in this case, we're suspending a course that had some basic life skills included, and I'm concerned about that.
We also, I thought that it was a result of declining enrollment.
So, declining enrollment in the high school, from what I was told, I had to be so.
At, and middle school.
At the middle school too, that was very clear.
Oh, I have the numbers in front of me, it was down specifically, but.
Yes, it was, it, that was laid out for the middle school and high school.
Was it ever at some point, those skills are required, thank you?
No, and, and I think what, what needs to not be lost here is the fact that we are, with the maker spaces and with the bringing down of the CTE coordinator, we're gonna actually take what is face, and the whole idea is that we're updating some of those skills, so some of those things are still going to be present, it's just not under that older umbrella of the face terminology, so we're still gonna hold on to some of those skills that you're talking about, but it's gonna be coming more from the CTE format and the ASV format.
Okay. Okay, so, I will send a motion to approve, final notice of non-renewal of Anita and Sealy Davis pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute on eighteen point two-two, a result of declining enrollment and therefore program suspension. Do I have a second? Is there? Second, okay, on favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item eleven, sinus refugium incineration. As a reminder, no discussion will actually be taken at this time, if our members have topics they'd like to discuss in the future. Thank you, seeing none of the other toll, or number announcements, unless anyone has any announcements. Uh, this is for.
Um, I can address it in an email.
Well, this, this is for both of us, another, uh, in, in the business meeting, people can almost speak about, uh, you know, uh.
No, I just asked for clarification.
Thank you, just ask for clarification, too, otherwise, we could, we could, we could get any, there's, 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 there's. I'm sorry, I thought it was.
No, I understood you completely.
Okay. Okay, um, so, any other members?
Okay. I think you fit here, because we're, I'm, I'm sure, I just, we're all, all this year, pretty high there at the district, uh, as you can see, it's taken three people to replace you, so. It's a great job, and thank you for your time.
Take care.
Thanks.
Any other announcements?
Can these people still perform a speaker angle? Yeah, we did, go see, uh, I was blown away by the steps for a while, just, and it's great spectacular, and, and, uh, it was, it was a really good time, and, uh, the downhill land, some of our students performed, and most of the sponsors.
Okay, so, then also you have a motion to adjourn. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries, have a great evening, thank you.